We thank you for all the blessings. We ask you to be with us today as we make decisions for the county. We ask that you send us the ring we need, ask you to bless our troops and all those people who have her convictions in northeast. In Jesus' name, pray again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, Citizens to be Heard. But if nobody wants to talk about number six was the presentation of grant funds by ConocoPhillips, does anybody want to talk about that? If not, do you mind if we skip to that because they did ask us if they would like to go ahead. Who is here with ConocoPhillips? Hi, how are you today?
Great. My name's Randy Black and I'm our operations manager for this area for ConocoPhillips. And being in the area and then operating in the area for our Eagle Ford operation last year, we made a permanent presence here, continued on this year and hopefully for a long time to come. We've got a good presence in the Karnes County area and we wanted to continue our support with the volunteer fire departments both in Crown City, Ramney, and in Kennedy. So what we've got to present, obviously a check that we can't cash here, but actually the real money's actually been transferred, $12,000, $4,000 each for the volunteer fire departments in those communities. And for us, as I'm sure with you, I mean, that is an important participation because as dry as it is and with our operations in the area, we appreciate it and want to help do what we do to support that and hope to have that continuing in a long time to come. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, we definitely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any representatives?
There's representatives. I want to check them out.
Turn around, right?
Yes.
Let's see, I'll get you on the other side.
All ones in the bag, short ones in the front.
Y'all never been in a photo shoot, all the short ones in the front.
I have, that's why I'm in the front.
Alright, so that looks good. Here you go. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, uh, excuse me, the next, we're going back to Citizens to be Heard. The next item is going to be Mr. Yard, who wants to be Yard?
Good morning. Good morning. My subject for discussion this morning is the road network in Karnes County. As I understand it, Commission's Court passed a $3 million amount for bond issue.
Can you hear us? Can everybody hear us now? Don't take that off the sound. Are these working?
You don't sound very loud, Judge.
No? It is on. Well, now, it is on. Everything I do, it stays the same. I know it's staying.
Bob, I don't think mine's on.
The volume is over here.
We have it on, Mr. Bustman.
There we go, there we go.
I can hear you.
Now we hear the tap, tap, tap.
Mr. Yard, I apologize. Can you please start over? Thank you.
My subject this morning is the road network in Karnes County. Approximately half the population of Karnes County resides in the country and with this oil play that's coming in, it's going to be here for some station amount of time. And at present time, it appears that people live in the country and have to go down mile or two of that road at this time to get the least benefit from the oil, from the oil play. It is my understanding that there will be an issue for the voters at the next election for a $3 million bond for road to approve. Quite frankly, I think that's a joke. I mean, it has, it has to be a joke. $3 million is not going to cover any ground to speak of. If you've got 50 miles of road, six inches of road base in Karnes County for $3 million, it'd be less than. If we're serious about approving the road network in this county, then we need to pass, put a bond issue up there that really means something to the people in this county and the people that live in the country. And it would be, in my guess, $30 to $40 million over a three to five year period. To do anything less than that is really just a waste of everybody's time and effort. It's a token gesture at best. So in my view, bond life should be for $30 to $40 million. If we, if we get the income stream from the oil field, don't have to use it, that's fine. But these roads need to be repaired because they're, they're not safely passable right now. And by law, those roads have to be maintained to allow safe passage of any licensed road albeit, and they are not. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yard. Next item on the agenda, it's number seven. It's to discuss approved, disapproved reimbursement of attorney fees in the amount of $29,295.36 in call's number 1104-001-Z-K, which is the state of Texas versus Bala Malone in the District Court, 218th Judicial District, Karnes County, Texas. I put that on there at the request of Mick McCamey. You have a memo in there from Georgia's firm that Ross wrote regarding that request that you can look at.
For the Commissioner's Court's review, I mean, you have the detailed legal opinion that is an attorney-client document. The judge is asking me just to summarize basically what's reported court and what the court's options are in connection with this board of the court's handling.
Can y'all hear him?
Can y'all hear me? I usually don't need a mic. The, generally, the way that the law treats these issues, if a public official has to represent themselves in court related to their official duties, there's a process under the law that allows them to, one, come to the court and request litigation counsel to be assigned them. That would be paid by the county initially, or if they don't take that step and they are successful in their defense, they can return to the court and ask for a discretionary reimbursement of the fees associated with that cost. That, that can be all or part of those fees, it's an entirely discretionary decision by the court. The, and so what you have before you is, is a request for that discretionary reimbursement to the official for the out-of-pocket fees associated with their defense and a litigation that was brought based on their position as a Karnes County official. And so it's, it's up to you with regards to the facts and circumstances, precedent, and in that case, in this case, in the matter before you today, as to whether you want to reimburse those fees.
Mr. Hyde, is there any precedence in this case? I mean, have we paid elected officials' legal fees and representation fees before?
Well, yes and no. I mean, there, there have been a number of cases where you've had individual officials sued in litigation cases where those, they have been represented through your Texas Association of Counties representation, which you pay for, which you pay a deductible for, out of their official capacity work. Those are typically claims that have been covered by your Texas Association of Coverage. And in connection with that, there has been another removal proceeding that a different Commissioner's Court, which you set on and Commissioner next to me set on, that, that was presented, but that case was dismissed before any substantial fees were, were incurred on that case.
Did your, did your firm represent the county in that?
Yeah, in, in that case, the-
Was that once?
Once.
Once.
And the Commissioners evaluated that before costs were incurred, approved the representation before those costs were incurred. And then I, I believe that, that the case was dismissed immediately without any action and therefore there was, there was little or no legal fees associated with that defense.
Could you tell me a little bit about that case? Who brought the charges against her?
Well, the, the county attorney asserted certain non-feasance in office of the entire Commissioner's Court in that case. It went through the appropriate procedure, which was that that was reviewed by the administrative judge, at that time it was Judge Peoples. And that case was not, it did not meet the preliminary scrutiny for purposes of going forward with that removal proceeding and the court sues Fonte just dismissed it outright without a defense for the officials.
Okay, and that was a suit brought by Mr. Bob Bustman, our county attorney, to remove the whole Commissioner's Court judge and-
And all Commissioners, yes.
And all Commissioners.
Now, yeah-
That suit failed and now we have another suit brought by Mr. Bustman, our county attorney, against our county treasurer that also failed.
Yes, however, and a distinction there is that this case was accepted by Judge Peoples' foretrial and went to trial, which is different than the prior claims, which did not even meet the, the initial scrutiny required by the judge.
Yeah, and I think, I'm not, can't speak for a judge, but that's a pretty tall order to remove the whole court at one time. I probably, myself, would have thrown that.
Yeah, the, I mean, it, they're, and that's the unique part about these is that these kind of claims really sit on a case-by-case basis. There's really not a precedent-setting issue because it's, it's all an individual case-by-case basis. What did, what is alleged by each elected official, whether or not there's evidence of that allegation, whether or not that evidence is sufficient to warrant removal.
Okay, if we do not pay these bills, what will happen?
In what respect? I mean, it's a discretionary choice. You can, you can pay them or not. It's, it's a-
I understand that. But as our attorney, I'm asking you, is it going to bring another suit and cost the county more money?
I, I, that would be pure speculation. I, I'm not aware of a-
Mr. Hyde, I think you know the answer to that question. I really wish you'd answered it. Quite honestly, I think you know the answer. Do you think this man's just going to walk away and say, "Okay, well, they didn't pay us?" Or do you think he's going to sue the county?
I, I'm, I'm not aware of a claim that he can bring against the county for a discretionary fee. And actually, the fee is actually reimbursement to the official, not to the attorney. So this reimbursement request is made on behalf of the official. It's the official who has that, that reimbursement.
Okay, what is your legal advice to the court since, you know, you're giving us legal advice today, Mr. Bustman is on? What is your legal opinion and advice to the court? Should we pay it or not?
It's a discretionary choice by the council or by the, by the Commissioner's Court.
Let me ask you another way. If you were sitting here on the court, how would you vote?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want to take the position where I'm substituting my judgment as a non-elected official for the judgment of the elected officials of the, of the county. If that's not my position. If you want to know my personal, my personal position, if I was a county commissioner here, I would have to look deeply into the case. If I felt that the claim was warranted, then I would likely not reimburse those fees. If I felt that the claim was not warranted and not properly supported, then I would reimburse those fees. That would be the way that I would deal with it if I was a county commissioner.
Can I ask a question? You said something about, "In warranted," when the Commissioners requested to be ousted or whatever, did Judge Peoples accept that case?
No.
Did he accept this case?
Yes.
And what, what was the verdict of the jury? The 12, 12 member jury?
And the case-
In this, this case right here?
I, I, I understand that she was not removed from office, but I don't know what the particular jury verdict was.
It was 12-0. Just to let you know.
When that decision was made, the fourth view of the judge's jury, the attorney's fees?
I, I don't know what the, what, what the outcome was other than that the case was not successful to remove.
So basically, through no fault of our own, our county attorney brought suit, the suit failed. Now we're stuck with a bill. Do we want another suit?
I was going to say, Mr. Bustman's here, he may be able to answer those questions.
Maybe you could shed a little light on this here for us. Number one, the case that I brought was approved by Judge Peoples. That is, they stopped Camp Major. They fly to the grand jury. He, he sorts out the cases and does or does not allow it to go forward. We had two days of very strong, albeit very, it wasn't dynamic stuff. We had an awful lot of evidence. It was put on by myself through our county auditor. The auditor did a very good job. The assistant auditor did a very good job. All of our witnesses did a pretty good job. The jury was out. Now, there was, there was gobs of paperwork. There was a stack about this high that was introduced into evidence, admitted by the court. It had things from the mistakes that was made by the treasurer on everything from payrolls. There was, I think, evidence of 11 payrolls that had been done by the Treasury Office. Two were correct. All the rest of that had to be corrected by the auditor. And the, the jury was out, big 10 minutes. They had not enough time to even look at any of the evidence. Okay, so it's easy for an attorney to say, "Well, I had a bad jury." So you want to retry the case or what do you want to do? That's a dumb question. You can't, you can't do that at this point in time.
Well, one of the things that, if I may, Mr. Bustman, that I think is, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that there was an exclusionary ruling by the court that indicated that a number of the alleged inappropriate actions were not admissible in the case because the elected official was reelected after those actions took place.
That's correct. That's out of case in Florida. Go ahead, Bob.
Right. And the fifth, there's a Commissioner's Court fifth, or the fifth precinct constable case out of the fourth court that also has that issue.
Right.
That if, if somebody does a poor job as a public official and they get reelected, once they get reelected, the information that happened in the past doesn't count anymore.
But we were there, we were there going in though.
And, and so there was that, that was a, a evidentiary ruling.
An evidentiary ruling that was against us, but we went, we were, I was aware of that. We prepared for that. We had gobs and gobs of, of evidence. And so it's simply- But not enough to convince a jury. No, not enough, well, it would have been enough had they already questioned. They didn't read it. They couldn't have had any time to have to turn. This is, can we rewind a little bit? In 2009, when you tried to remove the whole court? What, how come that didn't work? Because Judge Peoples did not allow it.
No.
Pretty simple. Well, if somebody were to bring a suit against you, Bob, you don't think they could find a pretty good pile of evidence to remove you? Now, you don't expect me to say yes, do you? I'm asking you to be honest.
See, I-
Mr. Malorme will not take public comments. That will not happen.
There are, there are two steps in these processes for the court's consideration. Step one is that preliminary gatekeeper role that Judge Peoples takes. What that says is that if the allegations that are in the petition are true on their face, would that constitute grounds for removal of office? If he believes that to be the case, then he will allow that case to be, go to court for proof of those allegations to be made. That's what happened here is he said that if the petition on its face is actually true, if you can prove the allegations made, then you could remove an official based on that conduct. In the prior case, where the entire, the court and the judge all were, were there, he reviewed those allegations and found that, that even if all of those things were true on their face, they're not sufficient to remove an official, so therefore that case did not go forward.
I think this was just a personal deal, Bob. Everybody here knows that Bob doesn't like Bala Malone. Everybody knows it. He said many, many times, to me, in fact, that we need to get rid of him.
Can I ask a question?
So, I mean, this looks personal to me.
Well, let, let the judge ask a question.
Explain to us, like, as the Commissioners, what our decision is. I mean, I could care less if anybody likes each other. What, what happened here is Judge Peoples accepted charges in one case and not in the other.
That's right.
So what, what makes it different for us as a court here?
Well, and, well, first, number one, you're a different court. You're different people making the decisions. Only two of you were on the court at the, at the time that there was a prior removal proceeding. That by itself indicates a majority of the court are different people, so you can come to a different conclusion. Number two is that the, if, if the court perceives the allegations against the public official were more severe on the basis that the court approved them, then that could be a basis not to, not to, not to reimburse. On the other hand, the fact that they were not proven sufficient to remove the official would lean more towards reimbursing the official.
Can you remove somebody because you don't like them?
No, there has to be a legal ground to remove them.
Well, the way I see it, if you, if this court votes not to pay the bill, you're saying she was guilty, which is opposite of what the, what the jury said.
No, that, yeah, that, that's, that's not the-
Well, any one of us sitting here, he could single us out and do exactly what he did to Mrs. Malone, and you would have to pay it, or you'd have to pay it. And how would you like that? I know you and Bob are friends, you and Bob are friends, you and Bob, but hey.
This is not about friendship, this is about news.
Well, and I- The judge made the decision that the allegation that had put in my petition were, were good allegations. Bob, you're 2,300 cases behind. You haven't tried a case in four or five years, and the only one that you try is to remove somebody that you don't like, and I just, I don't like it. And I, and I have any- I don't care. My, my vote is to pay the, the legal bill.
Okay, but, but hold on, hold on, hold on.
I don't give a damn if you like or not.
Okay, let's not get into, let us speak here. Can, could?
Let me, let me, can I say something?
Did, did anybody ask for Judge, did anybody not ask Judge Peoples for recovery fees in there? Could that not-
There was nothing in the charge.
Did anybody ask?
Well, the judge asked to make whether or not you wanted attorney's fees, it's an open county payment. And how he made that determination, I don't know, but I heard him say that. But let me go back. Bala Malone, signed up and was appointed, I called by and asked her to come in and-
Are we here to argue whether or not you and I get along or to pay the bill because y'all are getting way off the subject?
I agree.
Then drop it. But you know what? Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. I just want everybody to know, because we always come in here and everybody gets into big bites and everything gets very disturbing. And, I mean, nobody else has to do this before, and, I mean, it happened a couple of times, but it's every meeting here. It's a class B misdemeanor to disturb a public meeting. It really is. So let's have a public meeting and let's just, let's all do it. Because if we're going to disturb this meeting, we have a sheriff back there. Anybody that's disturbing that meeting, sheriff, just take them out. I can't deal with it anymore. There's, let's just deal with, let's let the lawyer talk. Because nobody knows what's going on, because everybody's in a big group, it's about who likes someone who doesn't. We're trying to figure out what to do with something very serious here. Okay, George?
Well, it, I mean, really, the, and there are two, two points. One is, is that Section 157.901 of the Local Government Code is the law that applies to the circumstances. The way that the Attorney General has addressed the issue of paying these fees is that typically they're not available to an individual unless the removal suit is brought under the name of the state of Texas. If they're available, then it becomes a discretionary issue by the Commissioner's Court as to whether or not to pay those fees. Here, it sounds like that the argument that is being made is that, on the one hand, we should, you know, I, I think Commissioner Cona, if I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I think you're saying is that you felt that this was a politically motivated pursuit of a claim-
Absolutely.
And because it was a politically motivated and not factually motivated claim, that the county should reimburse those fees. On the other hand, I think the, the other argument is, is that because these, there was no, or there was not sufficient evidence necessary to convince a jury of those claims, the, but the claims were nevertheless legitimately brought according to the Judge Peoples accepting the claims, that she shouldn't be reimbursed. And, and again, you know, it's, it's an opinion on, on the Commissioners and they have to make a decision. Whether or not you reimburse this case has no basis on whether or not you reimburse a prior case or a future case. It's not a precedent-type issue because the claims made against this public official are not the same claims or the same situation that would be brought against the sheriff or against a Commissioner or, or anyone else. So it, it really has to do, you have to look at this case and say, if these claims were brought, but there was no animosity of what you, you spoke of, would the county pay or not? You know, it's, it's really up to y'all.
What I think's going on here, really, I mean, if we don't pay this amount now, we're going to pay a lot more later, and you're going to make money. Because you're going to represent the county, Mr. Bustman is not. So it'd be to your advantage if we don't pay it. Because we're going to be back and forth, more legal, legal expenses, and I just think that we ought to pay and be done with it and-
If, if the Commissioner's Court believes that my advice is in any way tainted on the opportunity to make any money-
No, I'm not, George, I'm sorry, no, I wasn't saying that. But, but what I say is correct-
I won't accept representation for that case.
But you will represent us if this McCamey comes back and sues the county, you will represent us. Is that correct or not?
What grounds do you have to sue the county? I'm confused now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of a legal claim that could be brought.
Okay, well, maybe you won't. But I'm, I'm on record here and everybody's going to watch it on video tonight, but maybe we won't.
Yeah.
And if we're not, eh?
Could some novel legal theory be brought because there is no gatekeeper for a civil suit?
I guess we'll see.
You're absolutely right. A lawsuit could be brought of some type, of some sort, seeking some type of improper treatment on the basis of the decision by the Commissioner's Court. I think it would be a novel claim. It would not, it's not a claim that's well-settled or well-founded in the law.
Okay, we're ready to go to the votes?
Okay, I want to ask a question. If this employee had gone to attack, follow the order of this Section 157.901, ask for counsel, come to the Commissioner's Court. Would CAC have been responsible for version of lawyer? Would this expense have been less? I haven't seen the bill. I heard $49,000. When I want to pay $49,000, I want to know what it's for.
Yeah, generally, though, that a removal suit, since there is no damage claim against the county, is typically not the type of claim that is covered under a insurance-type agreement with either the Texas Association of Counties or the Texas Municipal League or other, because there's no, there's no damage to the, there's no allegation of damages against the county. And so this is the type of claim that would be borne by the cost of the taxpayers' general fund to the county.
Okay, so what I've read in here is that this employee had the right to ask for legal counsel from the court before it occurred. Is that correct?
There, yeah, there are, are two ways to go about this. The, the step one would be, I've been sued by the county attorney to remove me from office. I don't believe that the allegations are true. I'd like the county Commissioner's Court to assign me a lawyer so that the county Commissioner's Court can control the costs associated with that and pay for those costs upfront. That's step one. Or unless you do, if you don't want to do it that way, if you don't seek that additional counsel, then they can hire their own attorney and then come back later on and say, "I've proven that I didn't have anything, I didn't, you know, I wasn't responsible as alleged and therefore I'd like to get my attorney's fees reimbursed." Those are the two options under the, under the statute that are available.
of a lawyer? Would this expense have been less? I haven't seen the bill. I heard $49,000. When I want to pay $49,000, I want to know what it's for.
Yeah, generally, though, that a removal suit, since there is no damage claim against the county, is typically not the type of claim that is covered under a insurance-type agreement with either the Texas Association of Counties or the Texas Municipal League or other, because there's no, there's no damage to the, there's no allegation of damages against the county. And so, this is the type of claim that would be borne by the cost of the taxpayers' general fund to the county.
Okay, so what I've read in here is that this employee had the right to ask for legal counsel from the court before it occurred. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are two ways to go about this. Step one would be, I've been sued by the county attorney to remove me from office. I don't believe that the allegations are true. I'd like the County Commissioners Court to assign me a lawyer, so that the County Commissioners Court can control the costs associated with that and pay for those costs upfront. That's step one. Or unless you do, if you don't want to do it that way, if you don't seek that additional counsel, then they can hire their own attorney and then come back later on and say, I've proven that I didn't have anything, I didn't, you know, I wasn't responsible as alleged, and therefore I'd like to get my attorney's fees reimbursed. Those are the two options under the statute that are available. I understand under this circumstance, the first option was not taken, it was only after the expenses were incurred that she requested reimbursement, which is authorized by the statute. The, the, it really comes down to that, whether you want to reimburse or not under those circumstances.
I want to point out something else. The evidence that was produced and entered was admitted by the court and went into the record. The fact that the jury did not read it or did not pay attention to it...
How do you know they didn't read it, Bob?
These, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I don't know that these funds are budgeted.
They're not.
And so, they're an unanticipated expense, so in order to pay these funds, should you do, you would need to do a modification of your budget to identify those sources.
I agree. I agree. Properly done, it would have been done prior to the hiring of the attorney.
And so, yeah, if there is action in order to pay these funds, then that action needs to include an unanticipated amendment to the budget to pay these fees.
Did Mr. McCamey know these rules? Did he know that you could come, that you could give your poll while you're, I mean, does he know that?
I mean, Mick McCamey is a very competent attorney, I'm sure that, I don't know whether you know him off the top of his head, but I'm sure that he's generally familiar with the courts. And those decisions are the client's, not the attorney's.
But you have to know.
I mean, this is obviously a very volatile issue before the court, and so, you know, the official may have felt that it would have been futile to ask before being able to exonerate herself. Now, I'm speculating again. I mean, I hate to do this...
You're an attorney, George, definitely.
But, you know, I mean, in the experience of dealing with these cases, there is an atmosphere that the, that a commissioner or a sheriff or a public official is under, and they make those decisions based on that atmosphere. And so, you know...
We're waiting for...
Saved by the bell. You know, you can take that, take that atmosphere into consideration when you consider the official's conduct.
Y'all want to go one by one, starting with the judge, see how everybody's going to vote on this?
I'm usually the tiebreaker, so that's the best job.
But you're also the presiding over it.
That's right, I usually do that. But I will ask this, when both options given, there was a choice there of what to do? It's not the exact same thing that happened last time?
Right.
Did Judge Peoples have to accept these charges?
No, he didn't have to.
So, why would he accept them?
Because in the judge's opinion, the allegations that were made in the petition, if true, would be grounds for the removal of the official from office.
Okay, the original allegations were not the allegations that actually ended up going before the jury. I mean, I can make all kinds of allegations without you personally, that'd make it true.
Will the judge accept them?
Well, the judge doesn't know whether they're true or not. He, all he does is he looks at a piece of paper and goes, oh my God, if this is true, yes, we need to do this.
Well, in circumstances where the trial evidence is less than sufficient, a judge does have the discretion to excuse the jury and issue what's called a directed verdict. And sometimes they don't do that until the jury rules, because they only correct the jury if the jury comes with a wrong decision in the judge's opinion, which is typical. They'll go ahead and allow a case to go to a jury so that the jury can make a decision, and then only after he sees what the jury does will he issue a directed verdict if he feels that there was no evidence to support the jury's verdict. But the judge has the discretion at any time during a court case to excuse the jury and make a directed verdict on behalf of one party or the other, if that's...
Normally, the attorney has for directed verdict in their, before their summation, and that was not done here either.
Bob, I know this is not going to make you feel very good, but one, I read the petition. I knew right then, nothing rose to the level of removing from office, and I'm not even an attorney. I think it was poor judgment on your part as to what I think.
Obviously, you're not a attorney.
Waste of time and money and everything else.
Well, I think in all fairness, and if you want my opinion, and this is in all fairness, if she could have come and asked us, she should have, you know, we would have helped her. But if she chose to, she can, and that's her right. So, see, both sides are right, neither side is wrong. And so, if you look at it in that perspective, this is my motion. I make a motion that we pay half of her attorney's fees. I don't want her out of all of them, but that's my motion. And if there's not a second...
I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I'm against.
Any opposed?
I'm against.
I'm agreeing with you. You're against? So...
That's... Me too.
So, you didn't cause the county that much worry, Bob?
We'll talk about it at some other time.
Okay, so at the next, before those, you need to bring up a budget amendment to modify the costs to afford the 50% of that. I guess that's for the next Commissioners Court meeting.
What do we have to do, George? Luana, you got that? Will you write that down?
Right, I mean, and Luana's a little familiar with it, I think, but right now, you didn't budget $29,295.36 or 50% of that for this issue. It's not in your budget, so it's an unanticipated cost, so you will be able to modify or amend your current budget for this year, but you have to amend that budget to pay these 50% of the $29,295.
Did you write that down, Luana? The next item on the agenda is to discuss disapproval, number three, to contract 728-115 between Florence County and the Texas Department of Rural Affairs and authorize the county judges sign. The same thing that we get all the time. I'll show it to y'all. I made a copy of it. It's one of the four, you know, the partner role of the local area. Y'all want to see it?
Yes.
Do you want to do it or not?
I'll make the motion right through. I'll take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll find you, Carol, I'll make a copy and get you, you want an original, original? I mean, you did an original, or you just want a copy of the... The next item on the agenda is to discuss disapproval, returning landowner of the land which was occupied, County Road 227, which has since been abandoned as a county road, and that's Bob. I have, I just put that on there.
Yes, I'd ask for that. The reason is that the Camber, this Camber family, they're the roads that have gone through their property, and it goes 227, and it has been abandoned, but they never got their land or royalty back. And I asked to be put on the agenda because we need to, I still need to do some more looking and also get with the EOG. It appears to me that that is, that that part is correct, but I don't know who all of the Camber people are, and I have to do some more research to find out where they built it. But I think the road has been abandoned, and the land should go back to the rich people that own it, and I'll have to just look at that, because I just simply, I'm sorry, I just needed time to do that. It's quite a choke ring.
How was it abandoned?
I have no idea. It's been, it's been abandoned for a long time. It's just...
Is it like a dead-end road or something?
Well, I have a picture here. I didn't make copies for all of you, but I'll show you. This is, it's dead right here, and it's not shown as a viable road. And it's, it's not been closed either by actually, it just happened, it was listed in the...
They just want roads in the bar here.
It was closed in 227.
Right.
And, well, it's active in...
Was it at one time a true road, or is it...
No, it doesn't show that precinct. It just shows, it shows it coming off another road, through 227.
Really?
It just ends.
I don't know where it's...
How many parcels of the road is your property?
Just now, there's two as well. That's what we have to...
No, I was aware.
False, it's...
Jeff, have you guys... Jeff, we have a question.
Yeah, there is one room that's been, that's actually a good family that's been...
I don't know. Unless you can show us a parcel or something that have access to that, I don't know if they should take any action, so...
Well, the only thing I'm asking you is for me to report investigation there, because we can't do...
I have no objection to it. I think we can contact those people.
We will.
Contact those people first.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, Jeff and Bob know that, you know, I've had to defend the county on public roads, this county on public, on whether or not it's a public road in the sense of your population. I would just be very careful that your action today is to investigate, not to abandon, because it takes, if you have more than one piece of property that's serviced by that road that could ultimately be landlocked, it would be inappropriate to abandon a road that you need to make it revisable if it's been ignored.
Some other people would use that road by getting to their house, and they're going to look for...
And since...
Unless it's in agreement with them to have a closed gate that they want to go through or whatever.
You're going to abandon that, you're supposed to portion that property to these existing properties.
Go back to the...
That's what I was going to do, but I think we'll probably do it, because I think it's...
Well, I'll check it out.
Yes. Because we have two people here. Like I said, there's two people that lived on that road, because I repaired that road going in there. But I don't know if that road turns and went into Cambers at one time or something. We don't know, but that's why I'd like to, because we'd like to have time to check it out.
Make the motion to investigate County Road 222.
227.
227, I'm sorry. More abandonment possible. I'll make that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That's a sorry, I still listen, y'all.
They came to me with the EOG, you know, the county attorney.
The next item on the, oh gosh, number 10, review discussed proposed budget for fiscal year 10/111 to 9/31. All changes that have previously been discussed are included in here. Twenty-four hundred dollars a year for all full-time employees, unless their hourly raise will remain under $10 an hour. It would be under $10 an hour, there's those $10 an hour, which would be an annual salary, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. For part-timers that are currently in positions, got a dollar fifteen per hour raise. Any new positions for part-timers are budgeted at $9 per hour. We add individualized budget salary increases for the Sheriff's Department and Road and Bridge that are incorporated in here. After I do a fine-tooth comb of it, I'll get it to Carol in the section for filing if all are permitted, and then next it's been the...
Everything's basically the same as what we voted on yesterday, right? I was against it yesterday, and I'll be against it today, so... Don't have to be unanimous to pass, so...
Eight hours of sleep didn't change your mind.
Usually does.
That's why they're warm, you sleep on them.
Yeah, I usually stick to my guns when I say something. I change my mind just because it's something, I have before, you know, that may work, but it has to be pretty good. I don't know, we want to go talk about it one by one. We did yesterday, and it was 3-2 yesterday, so unless eight hours changed it, but if...
What is it, you objected mostly to the $200 a month raise?
To the raises, but they were, they were just too high. We've never given any kind of raises that high in the county, and I wanted to more, wait to see if we were going to get that revenue before we start spending money that we don't have. That's the only thing that, I mean, everything else, I find everyone needs their stuff in the offices, and they do need a raise and everything. I just think that the raises are a little bit too high, because you don't know what kind of, you know, this boom's going to stay with us or not. I kind of wanted to give it a little, little time, but, so the same thing as I said yesterday, same thing I said two weeks ago, that I haven't changed my mind.
I agree with that, too. I started out with 5% and 10%, and wanted more, and Carl jumped it to 500, and I knew that wasn't possible.
Pete, that's just a fluff of a starting place, Pete.
I just had to get y'all talking, so we came back, but...
I've heard it started a lot of conversation. You got people talking.
Yeah, that's what. Anyway, the, as James said yesterday, I agreed with, there won't be raises next year with this much raise. I'll be ready for that. One, I'm looking for a page here, which you, which one tells us how much we expect to have in undercover ballots at the end of the year, if we collect all the taxes?
Each fund is separated in here. I did, I filled out some page, I adjusted on all sorts. We got to adjust to this packet, but you did fill it.
Anyway, I voted for it yesterday, I'll vote for it again today.
Well, actually, the agenda, I have, hold on, right now it's not the vote, it's just discussing the... So, there's no action here?
The next item. It's the next item.
Okay, let's go to number one. I remember reading that, and I know I read that. Start, give me your check. Approve, disapprove of both budget for fiscal year 10/111 and 9/312 for filing in the county clerk's office.
I make the motion not to accept one.
I second that motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, I'm sorry. Motion carries through to the budget section. And if that goes, what did I do?
No, we haven't moved back for another one.
What did I do?
That one dies, and then go ahead and...
For a lack of a second, excuse me. No, you seconded it.
We have a second, but they beat us, so now they have to restart another motion.
Excuse me.
Now, that motion, we accept this budget for fiscal year 211.
It's okay.
I know, I'm judging it out.
I didn't catch everybody's vote. Did everybody vote?
Are we on number 11?
Yes.
We're on number 11.
Number 10 was the discussion, number 11 is the approval of this...
And I called it wrong, I said it, I said, because it was, I called it backwards. Excuse me, I apologize, I know I paid for that dearly, but I did not need to do it.
Pete, you want to say that our force filing in the county clerk's office...
She seconded, and then...
And then she called for a competition, a three approval, and that was it, just those two votes?
Mark him.
And they have both.
I'm 4-2.
Four, so there were three votes.
Just like yesterday.
We got another motion on the table. That's it. First of all, I'll restate my motion. I'll make a motion to approve budget for fiscal year 211, let me do that, for filing in the county clerk's office. I'll take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, now, through to motion carries. I apologize. You know I'm not allowed to make a statement.
I didn't, I didn't think, I didn't think everybody voted.
Actually, I think it was four, only four.
That's one, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five.
Only one voted yes, and you checked.
Okay, because he seconded and four, right? Yeah, the motion is the second, then the vote is these four, four.
I have it correct, if anybody wants to...
Yeah, please.
Okay. For the thing, okay, the first motion was James to disapprove the budget, Barbara seconded it.
Right.
They voted for the disapproval, the other three voted opposing the disapproval.
Okay.
Then Commissioner Yauer made the motion to approve the budget, to accept it, and then file it. Commissioner Shindel seconded it. Yauer, Shindel, and Hummel voted for that.
Okay.
Commissioner Rosales and Judge voted against it.
So, the question is approved as it is right now?
Yes, for filing. Thank you, Carol, you're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Number 12 on, we're done with that one. Number 12 on the agenda is discuss crime stoppers, and that's Leva.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everyone? Well, we have been talking about starting a Crime Stoppers in Carnes County for probably multiple years now, and we have finally got that to happen. We have a board set. Um, Judge Pierce is our president of the board. Trey Hill is our vice president, and Sylvia Gutierrez is currently acting as secretary of treasurer until we can get everything actually up and running. Trey Hill has assisted us in the process of getting the 501(c)(3) fee that you have to have in order to set up a bank account and be able to pay out things. The county has been collecting fees for Crime Stoppers for years. There is a current bank account, however, there's no budget attached to that bank account, which is why I'm here today to ask on another agenda item that you consider allowing this passport to pay three hundred dollars towards the 501(c)(3) so that the board can then establish, um, the bank account that we can move forward from there. We will need to, do you need to change that one? We will need to, um, set up policies, get with Maura, set up policies, and see how she wants us to get that, those funds moved over to the bank account and how we can track that. Right now it's sitting in an interest-bearing account. We want to make sure that it continues to draw interest, so there are things that we will still need to be looking at. But we do have an active board. I do ask that, Mr. Yauer, you being from the Falls City area, we are still looking at somebody from Falls City to represent us. If you know anybody that might be interested in that, we have representation from Randy Kennedy at my city, so we're still looking for.
Anyone else we have who's in that?
Um, we have on the board, Kelly Glover is on the board, um, Ms. Gilli is on the board.
Which, which one?
Danae.
Same as Gilli.
Lisa Ross is on the board because this is part of one of our grants. That's how we kind of initiated being involved juvenile probation. As you know, law enforcement is not supposed to sit on this board. They can attend meetings, have the information, but they cannot be active members to the board. As I said, Judge Pierce, Trey Hill, Sylvia Gutierrez, um, I'm trying to, I think that's everybody right now. We do have bylaws in place, we have accepted bylaws, we kind of feedbacked off of what Olson County has already done and has been successful at doing. Any other questions?
So then we go to number thirteen.
Which is the ad.
Approve, disapprove filing on behalf of Crime Stoppers for revenue account of county funds, only collecting fees for Crime Stoppers.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Niva.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Niva, I've been trying to get a Crime Stoppers here for the last four or five years, and Niva and a bunch of her people have got together and got out of here and made it happen. I want to give her a round of applause.
I saw Judge Pierce calling over. He left.
Here, go move his truck.
Oh. We finally found the owner. The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove advertising for Lussie Bitters for one point six five, six five acres of land, none of the Carnes County yard Gillette, and that's Bob.
The, uh, I talked with Jeff, and he has a person who's interested in renting or leasing that property. Uh, the, this morning we talked about not the whole thing, going to remove, we're going to take ninety feet of the front end off, and they will not be, not be leased to whoever gets the highest bid. But, uh, it's a, it's a good way to get somebody out of that tract. Currently it's just not being used at all, except for some of the buildings, I think. Is that correct, Jeff? Jeff here? You are left. I think the, some of the buildings have some information or equipment in it, and that's all that's been pulled out of that. Whoever wants to, whoever wanting to, leasing it, I think will use it for some sort of commercial pipe bidding or whatever. I have no idea. Well, of course, they don't know who's going to get it.
Did he have, did he have, did Jeff have written in there at least part of the building? Because that was a request of one party.
Uh, no, he did not tell me about that. He just gave me the, the ninety feet off of the one side, and I have the map, and I thought it brought with me, because I also have the heat and electricity. It's ninety feet off of the one side. Sorry, I don't remember which side it is. Everything else is built. But my, my, and adding is that it does not include any of the buildings. I'm going to check with Jeff again. Because we need to get the, uh, whoever's interested in, in leasing it, needs to know what they're getting, and I need to know.
It would be more, it would be very simplified that you're not leasing it.
But I need to put it in the paper though, too, so our, our draw up the, the quest. I don't know what's going in there. I was not aware of that. We talked about it, but he, we kind of heard.
What do we need with building board?
Actually, there's a tractor, the trailer for it.
Yeah, that's a tractor, tracer, something like that.
He's probably putting off of that county road like a ninety foot to keep all the buildings.
Right. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I'm pretty sure.
I have it on the map, but you can fly, you can hit on it.
He has the exact square footage that's not.
No, no, he's got the marked off, I haven't got the, I haven't got the, we just did this about five minutes before we.
Oh, okay. Right now.
I'm sorry.
I, I thought I had fallen, but I didn't.
It was here a while ago, but.
He went through a few, that's right, he has a plan to die.
And this right here, right, we are proven and everything, that's where anybody can go up for bids on it, right?
It'll be open for bids.
To my precinct, I'll approve that. All right, I'm sorry.
You said motion?
I said, I make a motion to approve. I second it.
You call for it, or do you second?
That's all right.
Rippling.
I just can't get any of it.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, no. Please.
Thanks, Mr. B, appreciate that. Discuss the impact of the proposed jail, which is going to be located behind my home at Roy and Small Street, Arthur Joseph Malloy. In your packages, if you'll please let Malloy provide us a list of questions. And it started out in a very, very, very short list, and he went home and thought about his list.
It wasn't that I just thought about, as everybody knows, I, I also have a little snow cone stand over there by the park.
I have that.
And my name was in the paper after it was presented to the city that you guys wanted to purchase the land for that purpose of the jail. And I had about a hundred people just come up to me and voiced their opinion about, does the county want to put the jail back there? My, I guess my first question is, what is the county and city's proposed remedy with regards to the impact on the neighboring properties, property value, which could make some of the properties unsellable? If I go and look at the plan that they have for the jail back there, puts it less than a hundred feet from my property, um, I don't think I'd be able to sell my property. That, that is a big concern for me. And it would be probably for anybody that owns property that's next to such a facility. Any, any, any input on that? I guess, I guess I'll be the same.
No, 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 Mr. Moore, we can talk.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, I'll answer your question.
We're going to, I mean, you have every right to come here and ask questions.
I mean, if you're, if you're going to build a facility next to somebody's property, and it's going to significantly reduce the value of the property, what are you going to do about it?
Let, I mean, with regards to the experience in other communities, because I work all over the state, and jails always are put next to somebody's property. You, you can't not put a jail somewhere where you're not next to somebody's property. The impact of that is varied. Sometimes it'll increase property values with regards to the use or reuse of that property, depending on how it's used. In larger communities, you typically see professional or other businesses that typically come up, which are adjacent to jails, which can create a residential use and a commercial use and increase the value substantially of that property. So I want to, unless there is some type of real estate appraisal with regards to the difference in property value based on the options of use of that property, I would like to, you know, a little bit caution you, I guess, with regards to speculative value versus actual value. Because in fact, it might double your value, depending on if somebody wanted to open a criminal attorney law office right across the street from the jail, it may be worth a lot of money. So, um, it's, it's a little bit of a different use, but that, in order for there to be a concern legally, you would have to be somehow not similarly situated with any other property that's adjacent to an institutionalized institution. And that's not, that's not present. So it would just become a policy issue as to where, where is the best location to put your community for that public facility? Because you have to have a jail which you're going to have long.
Okay, then, I guess that, it, it doesn't really answer my question.
Well, you may not be happy with the answer, but, but the answer is, is that there's no appreciable knowledge that I've been informed by the county of any change in your property value, up or down, based on whether or not there's a jail, and speculating, we don't know.
Okay, so, so I would have to pursue some type of, to prove what the value of my property is now, and then have somebody come in and assess the value after the fact, is what you're saying?
What, what I'm saying is that you would have to show that, at least, for there to be a legitimate link between your property value and this jail, for you to have some concern with regard to that application, you could do that the same way with a rendering plant, which may be available for that property, and could use it with, with any other use that is compatible with that property. What happens if they built a target next to you? Does somebody want to live next to a target?
No.
But would that property might have a significant value increase if you're right next to a target? Absolutely. So there's all sorts of different land use that can impact, and you'd have to be different than, it would have to be some specialized impact to you for it to be a, a legal concern for the county. Otherwise, they have to fit, they have to put a jail somewhere. And right now, they, they, at least, they have to use their judgment as elected officials to pick what's the best place for your community to put it.
Okay, now, this leads to the next, why would you want to put a jail next to a park that we just spent a million dollars on?
You want to finish it, it's a two-part question.
Well, okay.
I'm sorry.
In my little bit of research, I, I found that, um, doesn't the state and federal law prohibit convicted sex offender from being a resident within a thousand feet of a school or public park? Once you've incarcerated a person, that becomes their home address.
Why not? No, I know the sheriff worked real hard, other people worked real hard in trying to find another place.
That, that's, that's irrelevant. The question is, we spent a million dollars on a park, you want to put a jail next to a park, okay? State and federal law says if you, you can't have a sex offender's residence within a thousand feet of a park. Okay? I, I'm just curious what your feeling is.
Criminals are compelled to go to jail.
What?
Criminals are compelled to go to jail. It's not their choice.
That's not considered their residence.
So they're not voluntary.
It is their resident, according to state and federal law, and I researched it extensively. When you incarcerate a person, the jail becomes their home address.
That's right.
That's where they receive their mail.
That's right. But they're not there voluntarily. And for there to be a violation of a regulation, they have to commit that act with what's called men's right. And being in jail is a compulsory act issued by the state, a court order that compels that person to go there.
So.
So that would not be a voluntary act, which means.
There, there's no moral consideration in your part that you're going to put a jail next to a park where our children are going to be?
That.
And then those people who are in the jail, once they're released, they don't have anywhere to go, they're just going to wander over to our park.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting for a moment that any of my comments have anything to do with the moral issues or policy decisions by the county, by the commissioners, okay? All I, you asked a legal question.
I understand. Okay, this is their question now.
The other part is there.
Okay.
To decide where to put the, where to put it.
Because of all the people that are approaching me, that's their biggest concern. You're going to put a place where people, for whatever reason, are incarcerated, okay? Typically, people who are incarcerated, some of these people have problems mentally, okay? And they're going to walk out, and if they don't have anywhere to go, the first place they're going to go is go over to the park. And, because they have no place to go, maybe, okay? And there's a park, there's a bench, there's some shade. I don't have anybody to pick me up today. Or, or even this. What about the people that are picking those people up?
So I'm going to keep these things up behind you.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
One thing you keep saying, we're going to let these people out from the jail. One, you're innocent until you're convicted of a crime, so you're not guilty once you're arrested. You have to go forward to court to be convicted. All they are being arrested, and they be indicted.
That's, that's, okay, what about people that have been convicted for other offenses in the past? Okay? That are shady individuals, okay? That you have arrested for other violations, and they, they've done something that caused you to incarcerate the person for the.
That is great.
Let's say, let's say you've arrested a person for drunken disorderly.
Okay, and he goes to jail.
And he goes to jail for the night. And then he comes out the next day.
No, he won't, because he has to have a bond. And whoever's in jail does not automatically get to walk out, he has to get a bond, and once he get a bond, somewhere got to come up some money, and you keep saying he's going to walk out of this jail, walk into the park, somebody got to be there to get him out. They're going to pick him up and give him away.
Okay, what about people that are released from your jail?
Just released?
Yeah.
So they're released, so they're from Carnes County, most of them are released from Carnes County.
They're going to walk over to the park.
They can walk over to the snow cone stand, too.
That's fine.
They're going to be released, there will be a place to release, and I'm more than likely, play this, more than likely, when they get released, they won't try to get so far away from me, they're not going to be hanging around.
I don't know. That's the concern of our.
There's a lot of people that don't want to be nowhere near me.
A hundred people that have, have come to me, and that is only, it's only been a week or a half since we were made aware of the fact that they want to put.
What's your response time to the park right now?
Huh?
What is your response time to the park right now?
Probably less than a minute.
What would it be if you were next to the park?
Shorter. So we're right here, we're, I mean, and when they call out something to the park, we've got city police right here. So their response time is less than probably a minute or two, because it's just right here. Our response time, if we're there.
I've called, I've called the police myself.
The police is here.
For kids fighting in the park.
Okay.
And I've had to take them more than twenty-five minutes.
Okay, this is, I'm calling sheriff, I'm dispatch for the Horn City Police Department.
So there's, there's already crime in the park? There's obviously.
Crime in the park, so if you put a jail next to the park, you probably won't have that much crime.
Crime in the park, okay, so, I, I, two groups of kids fighting, so I called the police. Okay? There was five young men picking on two young girls. That was my one-time call. But that's a concern that people have brought to my attention, I too am concerned, okay? I too am concerned, okay? My next one, why wasn't the jail made part of the new Carnes County annex?
I can answer that question. Reason why, because the courthouse square is an archaeological and historical landmark designated by the state of Texas. And right now, it would make the Texas Historical Commission just tickle pink if you were to remove the, the jail from the courthouse square, because it's an archaeological landmark, and you cannot dig or do anything else without state permission. And they would like to see it changed back to the 1800s era, where the jail was smaller than this room, the entire building, and it wasn't even at the location where the current 1950 jail is. And so there would be a lot more state regulatory costs in trying to rebuild the jail, which, if it could be approved, which right now would be skeptical, based on our discussions with the Texas Historical Commission.
I guess that leads, why can't it be built there?
Why can't it?
Yes.
Because if you touch the ground, it's an archaeological designation, which you have to get a permit from the state to do.
Okay, so we, we could apply for...
Let me finish to answer, so you understand the answer before, so I may answer your question.
Okay.
And in order to get that permission, all of the indications so far from the Texas Historical Commission is that that would not be allowed, because it's inconsistent with their policy in order to, because they, because we even talked to them about, what if we created the, the jail with a facade that matched the 1800s era? And they said that's recreating history, it's not real history, and so we wouldn't be in, in, in favor of that type of modification. So we went down that road first, and we found, you know, roadblocks.
Well, I read an article, it was written about eight months ago, that there was an interview between this lady, who's the main lady for the state historical society, and she said she, their guidelines are based completely and totally on our desires and needs of our county, whether or not we do whatever we want with this lady.
That, that's not accurate.
What did this lady mean?
I met with the executive director and the general counsel of the Texas Historical Commission, with the county judge, and the county attorney, and commissioner, in order to deal with these various issues. And, and their position is, you can file an application, but good luck.
But we didn't request that.
And that was two months...
That was our first choice, because that's, that's actually the most reasonable, where the sheriff could get them in back and forth.
So this court has no intentions on filing an application to see what they would say? There's not no negotiations going on?
That, that's up to y'all, but, I mean, that's, that's a different process.
I mean, I don't think anybody, and correct me if I'm wrong, counselor, has anybody point-blank asked THC, yes or no? Nobody's filed an application?
Asked yes and then what?
Yes and where, told them.
Yes, but point-blank asked them.
On the courthouse square.
There was, there is no yes or no, it's, you would like to do this, what do we have to do to do it?
Please, please address that question.
We, 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 as far as I know, we have not filed an application for a permit.
We have filed applications, yeah.
So, we really don't know the answer then?
Well, we had an extensive discussion about how they would treat an application if one was filed, whether or not spending the money and time to file an application, how would that be received?
That's not the same as filing an application.
I understand, I just want to be fully disclosed. And that's why, I, because I already told you, we have not, as far as I know, we have not filed an application, nor has this commissioner's court authorized anyone from the county to file to seek a permit for, to, to rebuild the, the, their...
So there's a, there's a, there's a chance, is what we're saying? That it could be done? A chance? We're not saying it's a good one or bad.
Based, based on, based on the indications that their general counsel and executive director, and I, I would find that to be unrealistic, but possible.
Okay, so there's a chance, is, that's all I, that's all I'm hoping for.
What kind of time and money would we be talking about to file one, an application?
Well... I don't know.
I know that we're working on this over here, but I'm just saying, I mean, what type of money and time would we talk to them about?
And also, I mean, that would also mean that you would have to go through the Texas Historical Commission with regards to the size, position, location, facade of the entire building.
Counselor, hypothetically...
More than I'd want to take years, right?
Well, hypothetically, if we're going to kill the courthouse restoration project, and in the same conversation, the same meeting, oh, yes, and can we build a jail right here on the courthouse square that's historical? Yes, uh, they're probably going to say no.
Who's saying that?
That would not take long.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
No, no, we did not.
Um, we, we, we were identifying the options. Now, the, the issue that, that, that cut the mind though?
I said no, that, that's not, that wasn't discussed.
Um, the, the, the issue with, with regard to the, they, they showed us this picture, really cool picture, of, of your, of your courthouse, and what the jail and sheriff's office looked like back in the 1800s. And it was actually kind of back and away from the current position of the courthouse on property that's not actually part of the square. And they were like, well, you know, we would really, you know, likely say you need to find somewhere outside the square to build, because the square was predetermined before any of the courthouse restoration issues came up, as an archaeological historical site. And that, that way, we can't dig, we can't break ground on any building without their authority, and their only authority that they have traditionally approved is authority to build something which is consistent with the traditional historical culture. And so, with the controversy of, I agree with you, Commissioner Humble, that with the controversy over whether to return the current courthouse to the 1800s version, it would seem that you would be getting more embroiled into that controversy if you were trying to then rebuild the jail in that same way. Does that answer your question?
Yes, counselor, you're a very fine attorney, almost too good.
Sorry. I, I just, I want to make sure that the people know the truth about the accuracy of what goes on, I, and, I've got to tell both sides of the story.
Yes, sir, but I don't think that THC is really concerned about any kind of bones or anything in that ground. They're concerned with restoring the courthouse, that's all they care about. So I think if the county would say, hey, look, you know what, we'll just do this, you can put your jail over there, no, it's taking gift, this is politics. We're just looking for middle ground, we're not looking for over here, we're not looking for over there, we're looking for some, some kind of mediation here.
Yeah, they, they said their position is, is that they would like to restore the courthouse square to its original, okay, and, and their original...
That square now, I, I have never seen that.
Because that's, that's where their easement sits, is the courthouse square, which...
Right, but restoring the square is the same as restoring the courthouse.
Right.
Because you can't do one, you can't restore the courthouse and just go over here and start with this.
Right. Well, and this is the point, is that by restoring the courthouse square to its 1800s status would be the removal of the existing police or sheriff's office, and it would be open ground there. It would just be grass. That would be the restoration of the courthouse square.
Let's get the way off the century.
Well, no, that's, that's why the sheriff's cannot rebuild his jail in a, in a sufficient size and capacity in the existing position, to answer the, the gentleman's question.
What we're here for is to decide what is going to be an impact on the courthouse.
Well...
He has questions.
The solution to my, the solution to my problem would be to keep it near the courthouse.
Right.
That's the best solution.
Closer to the courthouse.
That's not only the best solution for me, it's probably the best solution for the people in the area.
Sorry. I think is what he, Mr. Malloy is asking us, have we explored that option?
I know, I know we addressed it that day.
At this point in time, my understanding is that there's a possibility that that could be explored. Right.
Well, I talked to Ms. Fleming the day after we had our discussion, she was here at the...
She's against it.
Dead set, but I asked her because I was in the position, because I knew I was going to go to the jail commission, and I needed a piece of property, just like you, Mr. Malloy. I wanted a hole, that maybe I could do this, because me and Commissioner Yar went to Johnson City to look at a rectangle jail, that we could fit on the back parking lot behind the courthouse. It would fit perfectly, we was talking about the tire, that's a whole nother deal. But, we could put that on the back parking lot. So, we came back for that meeting, that you was here, Mr. Hyde, and we had this discussion. When we got through, I went and talked to Ms. Fleming right after. I said, Ms. Fleming, you really don't know me, I'm David Yelovka, I'm the sheriff, I'm playing a rock in a hard place, and can you work with me on maybe putting a jail right behind the courthouse? Because I need to go before the jail commission in a very short time, and I need a piece of property, which, we didn't have that. We was looking at it, but we didn't have it, because the city was kind of fighting this up and at. She says, anything you could do that would take away the integrity of the courthouse with a new jail is not going to happen. And I said, ma'am, all I can do with my old jail right now is to work on the inside, to try to keep it up to, I said, you do not understand the position I'm in. I'm trying to keep an old jail running on the courthouse square, historical. And I said, all you're going to let me do is put a coat of paint on the outside. And she said, true. And that was it, that was the end discussion, so that's when, Mr. Malloy, I came and got in your backyard. Bottom line, because I could not do what I would think to be a great thing for the county, because we wouldn't have to worry about transporting people, it could be right there on that blacktop. Right behind the jail, I wouldn't have to move nothing, that big old tire, and you shot a number out, and I know it's going to be a lot of money, I know it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars to move that tire down there behind your house. But, that's kind of where I'm at.
It's actually probably a lot more, because I, I talked to some other people, probably somewhere in there...
You brought up a bunch of good suggestions, yeah, but this is what I'm saying. I mean, I have a perfect spot, I have the perfect jail, and I've got six or seven architects I've been talking to with Commissioner Yar, that could build us a jail that would fit perfectly on back, a 48-bed jail, this is what we need. It'd be a home run in my world. But we can't get there, so that's why we're...
We're not sure yet, because I'm still hearing there's a chance.
Well, everything that we're talking about is not on paper.
I understand.
If it's not on paper, it's like it never happened. Just like you three, or four, y'all went and talked to THC. We have no record of it.
Well, you talked to how many people? You talked to one person? One person isn't the whole group of people that make the decisions, right? I don't know.
Take a quarter of a dollar next time.
Let me just, okay, we've talked that to them for a minute. Okay?
Number five, Mr. Malloy.
After the physically irresponsible courthouse annex project cost overruns, which is still not known, what is the county going to do to ensure its residents that this will not happen again on the jail project?
Don't go to me, I don't, like I said, I'm just the sheriff, I don't like the policy.
I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like you want to build a jail over there, but we haven't looked at all the, the things that can affect the cost of a jail over there as opposed to over here.
I worry, I'm scared too, I'm getting shy, so I asked Mr. Hyde about that.
Because right now, right now, if I'm correct, and I'm not, I'm not sure about this, the new courthouse annex was supposed to cost less than four billion dollars, right? Initially.
No one?
Less than three.
Less than three? And, and right now, we're, and what, somebody told me that it's like we're at six.
What was the original cost?
I don't remember what the original bid was.
Two point three for the building with furnitures, they borrowed three million dollars to cover everything.
And they borrowed the money before they had the plans for building?
That's right.
I mean, it sounds like a lot of people are making decisions without fully planning everything out, and that scares me, and I'm sure it, it upsets a lot of residents, that there needs to be a much better plan before you execute anything this time around.
And, and the, the judge did ask us what mechanisms do we have which are proven throughout the state with other clients, in order to avoid those kind, kind of cost overruns in addition, with regards to special addendums to the contracts that require those changes to be done. We've done that for fire departments, police departments, sheriff's offices throughout the state, and, and so she's asked that if this project goes forward, would, would we be able to participate in ensuring those mechanisms are put in place? And we told her that we're available to the county to do that.
Okay, so, we've seen our error, and we're going to, we're putting in a system to make sure this doesn't happen against what we tell them, right?
Best efforts, yes, sir.
Okay. If there were significant cost overruns, what would be the consequences to those responsible? Is it, I, I think this body needs to make a, a, a plan ahead of time to say, you and you are responsible for this courthouse, or for this, for this jail, and you're responsible for the costs. If you don't make the budget within X amount of percent of the target, this is what's going to happen. And I think that should be laid out before anybody goes forward, what the, you know, somebody needs to have a consequence if they don't do their job right. When you're an elected official, I mean, you can get away with murder sometimes, and that's what it sounds like. I don't know what elected officials are responsible, but to go from three million to six million dollars, if you worked in the private sector, you would not have a job for very long.
I agree with you, Mr. Malloy.
There, there, there are a number of contractual provisions that place more, more cost...
I'm not talking about the contractual. I'm talking about the people that work for the county, that are responsible for oversight, what I think this group needs to lay out, what the consequences are going to be to those people if they don't do their job right.
There, there, and, and there are three, there are three methods. One is, you build it into the contract to make the contractor responsible for overruns, to the extent that they are. Number two is that you maintain a larger oversight on the job to ensure that those, those overruns are not done. And number three, and this is something legally called force majeure, which means that if I start building a foundation, and there's a huge limestone boulder underneath that that has to be blasted, that's going to be a cost overrun, because nobody could expect that to occur. Or if, you know, the heavens parted, and I know everybody would say hallelujah right now, if it started to rain for about a month, and we couldn't build, that would cause cost overruns.
You're talking, you're talking about things that cannot be foreseen.
Right.
I'm talking about things that were, were, we're not, we're not, we're not planned on...
Every time there's a cost overrun, the contractor and architect will say that this was an unforeseen circumstance, and that's why we're not responsible. That's what happens in these situations.
The people who created the project are responsible.
Right, and, and they will, they will also say that the architect and the engineer are not responsible for unforeseen circumstances...
I'm not talking about unforeseen things. I'm talking about people who were not, who were irresponsible in the design of the facility. Okay? I mean, I read, I read an article a while back where, oh, we don't have enough space for the records. Okay, the, people obviously didn't do the research ahead of time to, to determine how much space we're going to need for records.
Right.
So they had, had set, I, I think it was in the order of somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to increase the space for records.
And, and that ultimate, the ultimate responsibility is born at the ballot box.
Mr. Malloy, that group is not this group.
Okay, this group is... This group is the group that approves whether or not it's done, right?
Not the, not the one that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's use the courthouse as an example.
Okay.
The courthouse has needed renovation for years, 20 years maybe. It needed maintenance, which has gone undone by a number of officials throughout the time period. Now, it's a multimillion dollar renovation project. Who is responsible for that? It's the predecessors of the commissioner's court, who felt that they could put it off another year before they worked on this issue, over the last quarter decade, or, or quarter century.
It's probably even longer.
But, but that's, sure, it is, probably a century of time, here and there, over time. That's the point, is that when you deal with independent elected officials in our county government in Texas, ultimate decision with regard to responsibility ends with the people at the ballot box. And that's what, what's happened recently in your, in your most recent experience, is that there's been a significant turnover in that event.
Okay.
And that's, that's your ultimate responsibility.
I'm just saying that's something that everybody needs to consider, because, you know, as, as a taxpayer, to see something that was supposed to cost three million, cost six million, and maybe even more, is...
Frustrating.
It's frustrating.
I agree with you.
That's, that's a really good word, boy.
You have a point.
If we do build a new jail, how is it going to save us money?
I'd like to answer that. This jail is not going to save us money, it's going to cost us money. But we have to have a jail.
Okay.
We have to provide law enforcement, we have to have it. It's not going to save money.
Right now, after talking, I, I have to disagree with you for one. After right now talking to Mr. Yelovka, he has, at any one particular time, he may have, how many people in jail?
Twenty-nine to thirty.
Twenty-nine to thirty, how much room do you have?
Ten rooms.
He has room for six people over here, okay? If there was a facility right next to the court facility, he wouldn't have to transport people how far?
Uh, two hundred mile round trip.
Okay, which, for one, is probably a significant impact on your wallet when you pay for gas nowadays. Number two, is probably a significant impact on your vehicles. So to say, to build a new jail, is not going to save us any money, it's not true, okay? It's very true that it would save us money. What is the projected added costs of logistics associated with moving a prisoner back and forth to the courthouse? and forth to the courthouse? And as I said, I talked to Mr. Jeloka, I was assuming and doing some research, it would probably take two transport officers to transport people from behind my home to, over to the courthouse. And I assumed that it's going to weigh on vehicles, $50,000 to $100,000 a year maybe on a vehicle, because you've got repair vehicles, you have to put gas in vehicles, you have to pay for insurance. I'm sure the insurance premiums are higher because you're having to transport people over greater distances, so there's higher liability associated with it. And then I find out, well, he's already doing it. He's already wasting money left and right. He's storing money in a huge bucket because we have to transfer people so far, because our jail we have right now is a joke. And he says people joke about him all the time when he goes to other counties, what his jail facility is compared to.
They start feeling sorry for themselves if they're 96, a 160-bed jail, then they start thinking, I'm not Jeloka.
And then he also pointed out to me that in 2000, there was a plan to build a jail over evidently where the water treatment area is, it was, or over by where they keep the trash or something, that was shut down. And that was shut down because people from other counties were, we were sending our people, came over and says, there's no reason for you guys to build a jail, we're making money on it. So they presented to this group of people, and it got shot down, evidently.
That's your 2000, a 96 bed, so, and we had to land back then. It wasn't in your backyard, Mr. Martin.
I know, I, that really is very-
Do a talk over these questions with Mr. Malloy when we agree with most of them.
I'm just, you know, I'm pointing things out, okay? Obviously, everybody's not completely aware of how much money it could save us if we could put something right next to the courthouse, because then we wouldn't have to pay for the officers to transport people as far. Those officers would also be in our neighborhoods, protecting our, our property and our children and ourselves, instead of driving to other counties to get people. Not only, you know, the vehicles nowadays are getting more and more and more expensive, and you burn them up pretty quick when you're driving that far to get a prisoner, a guy goes how many times a month, you have to make the trip for a week.
Would you try to have them carpool? We try to carpool those prisoners, we don't try to bring them one at a time, right, Sheriff?
Well, the other day, I went to four different facilities, bringing in inmates from Thursday. Last week, I brought in nine from Travis, Pierceville, Laimbo, and Victoria County. I don't think bad, Mr. Martin, but back eleven. So I'm not getting really ahead here.
Well, wait, you saved money though, because you carpool, right?
Yes.
So you saved money on the trip, what, we're going to do that?
That's four officers going, you had them-
Four officers had to go?
Because they all had to be here at nine o'clock, because I keep storing my six-bed jail here.
Do you, sometimes the officers have to take them home with them and leave?
Well, I tried, I tried to do that, but the wife's around.
So number nine.
The value of the property, of the proposed property, it's been listed at $75,000, okay? If, uh, seventy-five, the value of this property probably should be reviewed. For the last 20 years, the structures on that property, more than 20 years, I have to talk to Mr. Dickens over there at the fiberglass plant, that these buildings were left to decay, and so any part of that value of that property was associated with those structures. I think the value of that property probably needs to be reviewed and determined whether or not that was an appropriate price. You know, I see that when they built the park, they valued the land of the park at half a million dollars. That's kind of a joke, in my opinion. They needed to raise half a million dollars to build the park, to get the other half million from the state. So they basically lied about the value of the property to get the money they needed. My question is, are we being lied to about that property value there's? You know, that's a big concern. Because if there's any value on, on, on the property based on the buildings, those buildings should have been torn down 20 years ago, it looks like. I live right next to it, so I walk around back there with my dog and so on. Once the phase one demolition is complete, the space from the old courthouse to the new annex will be in excess of 200 feet, which would leave plenty of room for the proposed 48-bed jail, which is 100 feet by 200 feet, based on a possible idea that Mr. Jeloka has for a facility. There must be some way we can apply for a variance or easement to build here. I mean, right now, you're going to tear down 32 feet approximately, I would kind of got an idea, of the old building, because it's falling apart, because it's sinking the, a part where the stairwell and everything is, I don't know, 32 feet of that is going away. So that's going to leave over 200 feet between the retaining wall of the steps going down with the new annex and the new, or the old courthouse area. And right now, there's some metal buildings sitting on that property right now as we speak. The savings for the county are undeniable if you were to use the land over here. $75,000 for the land behind my land. The proposed lane, $50,000 a year, or I'm sorry, $60,000 for demolition of six structures, which is really inexpensive and would be cheap. After talking to Gerald, my neighbor, the fiberglass plant gentleman, he tore a structure down two years ago, about three years ago, and he paid over $40,000 to tear that one You'd also have to excavate five concrete foundations, okay? So $50,000 to remove and dispose of, there's four 5,000 gallon storage tanks back there, there's one underground storage tank back there that we don't know how big it is, and there's a 500 gallon fuel tank back there. Before we can even start construction, conservatively, we may have to spend $185,000 just to clear that land, and that's really conservative, because to rent a boom, a boom truck to a boom crane to move one of them tanks is a thousand dollars a day. And I know that because I know somebody that rents one, $135 an hour, and then you have to have a certified operator if you don't have somebody certified. I don't know how much the operator costs. There may be some legal fees, associated restitution to residents for damaged property values. It may be as much as $100,000 or more to move the radio power if you move it over there. There's no question we need a new jail, but it should be right next to the new courthouse annex. The annual savings alone over the next 25 years would probably pay for a significant portion of the jail, or the annex, or even part of the courthouse with the restoration If you look at the potential added costs of more personnel and vehicle purchase and upkeep, that comes to probably at least $200,000 a year. Maybe I'm wrong. Over the next 25 years, at 4% inflation, that adds up to more than $5 million, which I think $5 million would just about pay for a good portion of the courthouse restoration, or would pay for a good portion of the $5, $6 million that we're spending on the courthouse annex, or it would pay a good portion of a new jail. If we present these cost savings, arguments to our residents, and our elected representatives also, a reasonable person would have to agree, a new jail should remain next to the courthouse annex. That's my little spiel for today.
Thank you so much for coming in and talking to us.
Mr. Malloy, if you have questions, please come to us, come do something.
I just, you know-
You have every right to do yours, sir.
I would just, I would really like to see if there's some way, you have to see the cost savings of not having to transport people. And then God only knows, the price of gasoline, the price of vehicles is just going to go up, the price of officers is just going to go up. Right now, I mean, you can hear how much he's wasted-
We know that.
-just driving people back and forth.
Mr. Malloy, you brought up some very good points, a very good presentation. I want you to understand where we are. We have a jail that is condemned.
Everybody understands that.
We had to appear before the jail commission. We had to have a piece of property. I talked to, I talked to twenty people, I talked to at least 20 people all over the city, corn city, and around here, there's something wrong with everything, some of them were in floodplains, a different reason why we couldn't get them, we couldn't get enough property in one place, that we had a very difficult time, and we took what we could get to present that to the commission to give us some time.
I understand.
And if we can find another place, we will certainly get another place, and if we can build next to the courthouse, we certainly will.
I mean, there's an awful lot of empty space between those two villages, if you go look at it. I mean, they may, to me, it doesn't make sense to have that entire area a historical site. Maybe it should be pared down to a reasonable piece of land. I mean, it's just empty space that is not going to be used for anything except for grass grown and trees grown right there right now. And if you can show somebody that, you know, this world is not getting cheaper, it's just getting more and more and more expensive. And the most logical thing to do is to have the courthouse facility and the incarceration facility as close together as we can to reduce the cost of transporting people. And to say to a county, which I'm told we're not that wealthy of a county, from, well, maybe we're a little bit more wealthy because we've got oil now, but to present to reasonable people that it's only the right thing to do is to put it right there and pare down this historical landmark property size, to me, that's the right thing to do. And I've had a lot of people come to me and they asked me to voice that opinion, because I said I was going to come here, and voice my opinion.
You're always welcome, Mr. Malloy.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Oh, they want to pay bills, I'm sorry. People want money?
Yes.
I know, I have been so.
Thank you.
That fancy line, I'll pull my way over here. Is there anything on here, Malloy, that we should know? That's not out of the, I mean, that's out of the ordinary that we should be looking for? Did you put any trick questions in this agreement?
No, I did not. She played the word yesterday, so we finished, yes. The only out of the ordinary, not normal expenditure is the very first one to improve the construction on the new annex, $41,497.96.
For?
Continued construction on the progression phases.
That's fine, except for retainers, except for a few, mine. That's just a practice.
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye. Next item on the agenda, ready to do this now, is to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Pierce?
I got the sign.
You did, I'm very aware of that. Were you charged with criminal crime or hiding?